I just want to remind everyone that our current process is that if you wish to address the council, we need to get you to turn in your application to speak to the city secretary. They need to be turned in by 6:30 and I'll give you a couple minutes of grace if somebody's filling one out. It is 6:30. As authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The city of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, reassess, recess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. It is 6:30 and I am calling us to order. Our National Junior Honor Society kids have not made it in tonight, but fortunately, we have Boy Scouts. So the Boy Scouts are going to lead us in the pledge if everyone would please rise.
(Inaudible)
It's nice to count on our Boy Scouts. We can always be prepared with our Boy Scouts. If you will please remain standing, Pastor Bob Long will be giving us the indication tonight. Pastor Long?
Thank you ma'am. Please join me in prayer. Father God, as we come before you tonight, we come with great thanksgiving that we have the privilege to live and work and play and pray in Bastrop County, Texas. And we thank you for this city. We thank you for our mayor, city manager, and these council members. And we ask that you give them your wisdom and your guidance to make good and godly decisions that will be a blessing to our city. We thank you for those who watch for our safety. We pray for our police department and our fire department and their chiefs that are here tonight. Lord, we do thank you for the Boy Scouts. And we thank you for all those who honor you and honor our country. And Lord, we just trust you tonight to not only lead this meeting, let it be a peaceful meeting, let it be a safe meeting, and help us to rejoice in the fact that we are here in Bastrop. We thank you for the good weather, the beautiful weather. We thank you for all things that will work together for good because you're our Lord and we look to your lordship tonight in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
You may be seated. Colin, am I messing you up? Are you going to be mad at me? Mikey, come on up with me. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Michael Boland, but I'm told everybody calls him Mikey. So this is Mikey Boland. I want to tell you a little bit about him. Whereas Boy Scouts of America is an amazing leadership development organization for boys to prepare young men to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetime by instilling in them the values of the scout oath and law. And whereas the Boy Scouts of America is one of the largest scouting organizations with more than 2.4 million youth participants and nearly 1 million adult volunteers. Whereas Boy Scouts of America was founded in 1910 and since then, more than 110 million Americans have participated in their programs. Whereas Boy Scouts of America offers every boy a chance to practice a lifetime of leadership, adventure, and success. The designation of Eagle Scout is the highest achievement in the Boy Scouting Program which was founded over 100 years ago. Only 4% of the Boy Scouts are granted this distinguished ranking. Whereas by using his values, skills, dedication, and commitment, each boy chooses a worthy community issue that he cares about and creates a plan for a long-lasting project, one that will last far after the boy's involvement. Whereas once achieved, his project shows colleges, employers, and his community that he is changing the world. As an Eagle Award recipient, these boys are part of an elite group of men. Whereas Mikey Boland of Bastrop, Texas received his Eagle Award on September 9th, 2018 for his All Paths Lead Home Project, which included clearing a brand-new path, building a bridge, and giving a large donation to the only green cemetery for people and pets in Bastrop County. This distinction will follow him throughout his life and will be a beacon to others of the leadership quality in his commitment. Mikey is also active in football, basketball, and track with the local tribe Warriors Sports Organization for Homeschool Private School Children in Bastrop County. He was in Cub Scouts for five years earning everything he could possibly earn, as demonstrated on his sash, and is enjoying his third year as a Boy Scout with almost half of the 136 merit badges earned. Now therefore, I, Mayor Connie B. Schrader, do hereby proclaim November 27th as Mikey Boland, Boy Scout of America, Eagle Award Recipient Day. It's a school night and they're great and I want them to be involved in politics and Let's have a round of applause for him. Congratulations. (Applause) probably the best way for that to happen is for them to not have to stay here tonight. So I told them that it was more than, that it's perfectly fine for you guys to leave. Have a great night and thank you for helping us with the pledges tonight. So we are on to the mayor's report. And before I get started, there is a song that I like that I think is kind of funny and it's the cover of The Rolling Stone. And the city of Bastrop didn't make the cover of The Rolling Stone, but we did make the cover of Texas Town and City. And that is Chief Alkelt in the bottom left-hand corner. Let's have a round of applause for Chief Alkelt.[424.81][424.81](Applause) And if you turn to page 14 and 15 in this TML magazine, you see an article about our very first volunteer fair that we did. Lots of pictures and a great article about it. So it's nice for Bastrop to get such positive press. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. If you go to the next page, you'll see a few pictures of a couple of things that I did between November 5th and November 15th. In the upper left-hand corner, it was the Chamber Luncheon. And we had a great presentation both about the Bastrop Food Pantry and then we also had a gentleman that spoke to everyone about the benefits of hiring a veteran, which was so prime since we were right there around Veterans Day. Then just below that, you'll see that I turned in the gobble kits and the Need for Feed had a program where people were donating, essentially providing Thanksgiving dinner to a family in need. And it was great to be a part of that. Then in the bottom left-hand corner, if you scoot up just a little bit, Colin, I was at two ribbon cuttings. The one on the left is Capital of Texas Roofing and Siding and they were, they started in Bastrop, they ended up having to move their business to Austin and they were able to come back to Bastrop where they wanted to be because they finally had enough business. So we're really glad to be a part of that ribbon cutting. And at the UPS Store, and yes, that is my grandson that I'm standing next to, he, I understand that the Chamber President Becky Wumble is going to make him an honorary ambassador. He really likes ribbon cuttings because he found out there's generally cookies, so he is all in for the ribbon cuttings. But at the UPS Store, they did such a great deal, they had a writing contest. And they went to the second graders and had them write an essay to enter the contest about what is something you would like the UPS to bring you? And so they wrote a story about a fun UPS package that they could think of and drew pictures and everything. And so the little boy that's cutting the ribbon won that contest. So I thought that was really a cool thing. Then in the middle of the page, you will see I attended the red, white, and blue banquet. Mayor Protem Nelson was there with his wife. I was there with my husband and Chief Alkelt was there with his wife. And we were very honored to be in the presence of seven World War II vets. And the gentleman in the center of that picture is Corporal Benjamin Anderson and he was a part of the Tuskegee Airmen. So just really fantastic history going on in Bastrop. If you go to the upper right-hand corner, that's our Second Annual Boards and Commission Banquet. And the picture on top is, I believe, Main Street and the picture on the bottom is the Youth Advisory Council, a board that was just recently started and just really happy to have our youth involved. If you go down a bit, you'll see the living history. I was so honored to meet Sister Sarah Collins Rudolph. She has just a phenomenal history and is a woman that is just completely full of grace and love. She is visiting there with Hannibal Lacunbi and he played one of his songs that he had written called "Rejoice." And I was especially moved by one line in it, which is "To give life all your love before you pass away." And I thought that was a really neat line and something to think about as we move into the Christmas season. The distinguished general I'm standing by is General Smith and he was the speaker at the Veterans Day event. And then that was just one shot from Hot Rods and Heroes. So that's just a few of the things that I did between November 5th and November 15th. If you go to the next page, I was in training on the 15th and 16th, but this specifically talked about the 16th. And when I was done with training, I went to Career Day at Mina Elementary and I was interviewed by the entire fourth grade of Mina Elementary. So you guys aren't scaring me at all. I survived the entire fourth grade. They were a ton of fun and I'll tell you, it is difficult to be the speaker that is between the kids and a seven-day vacation. I had 20 minutes at 2:00, so we had a good time. It was fun. On November 17th, my husband and I attended the Rotary Club's Men Who Cook. That was a really fun event. I hope everyone had a great thanksgiving. This past weekend was real busy with the Wassel Fest and the Small Business Saturday. I know there were some Santa brunches and we also had the Christmas tree lighting. And if you haven't already enjoyed the River of Lights, please make a point of going down and checking out the River of Lights. Once again, the city manager and her staff and with council's approval, it just looks beautiful downtown and it's really fun to see it. And it's November 27th and here we are. Then the things I'll be doing between now and the next council meeting, we've got a couple of design codes. One of the Boy Scouts said, "You're coming to my school." I'm going to be interviewed by the ninth grade of the Colorado River Collegiate Academy. So I'm looking forward to their, I'm sure, super easy questions. Oh, somebody tried to help me out. It's not Nutcrackers, it's Nuncrackers. I'm looking at it on my page. It is a new play that's opening at the Opera House and so I'm planning on going there on December 1st. I have a library board meeting. We have a regional 10 meeting for TML. And then on the 6th, I'm going to a TML Board Orientation and on the 7th, I'll be at the TML Board Meeting. And on the 8th, the Lighted Christmas Parade is only one of about 20 things that are going on on December 8th. So there'll be plenty of things to get everybody in the Christmas spirit. And then on December 11th, we will be back at City Council. And that concludes my mayor's report. Councilmember Rogers, do you have anything you'd like to talk about?
Well, I did go walk in the River of Lights with the grandchildren and it is fabulous. Go check that out.
Great. Mayor Protem Nelson?
I have nothing. I'm still trying to catch up with you.
Councilmember Ennis?
I have to second our mayor Protem on that one.
You guys are at almost everything I'm at, so you can't fool me. City Manager, do you have anything to report?
I do. Where is my esteemed fire chief?
He left. I'm asking if he's been to the tap.
All right. Well, he'll just have to watch it on film. One of the things that happened over Thanksgiving is we are absolutely delighted to be able to remove interim in front of Chief Rosales's title. He served as interim fire chief from August until he was appointed full-time fire chief by our Director of Public Safety and Police Chief James Alkelt. I am delighted at James's appointment of Andreas because I'm sure all of us had dreams as children as to what we were going to grow up and be. My dream was to be a truck driver. I didn't become a truck driver. I married one. Andreas always wanted to be a fire chief and his earliest memory of that is five years old. And isn't it awesome to finally be able to achieve that dream? He really has a heart of service. Not only has he spent time in the fire service, he came up through the ranks as a dispatcher. He is a certified law enforcement officer. He was a police officer in Lubbock. He is on our reserve staff in Bastrop. And because he had twins and needed to pay the bills, he became Director of our Information Technology and really is credited with the foundation of all things information technology that we enjoy today. So it's awesome and we couldn't be more proud of the fact that Andreas Rosales is now our permanent fire chief. So if you've not seen him and been able to congratulate him, we hope that you will join in our supreme proudness at his accomplishment. So congratulations to Andreas.
Let's give Andreas a round of applause.[981.86][981.86](Applause) He's really just an outstanding human being and I know he knows a lot of people and if you don't know him, you need to put that on your list of things, people to get to know. City Manager, anything else to report?
No ma'am.
Okay. We are moving on to Item 4E, Received Presentation Regarding Bird City Designation by the Audubon Society. Mr. Jobs walking towards the mic.
I'm just going to come up here and introduce Kelly Sebaugh with Texas Parks and Wildlife. She's actually going to give this presentation. Here she is.
Mayor and council, I will say that at the conclusion of her presentation, we'll be coming back. This is an awesome opportunity, but there are some policy choices that we want you to be made aware of before you endorse or one way or the other. So just know she's the beginning of what will be a multi-step presentation this evening.
Thank you. Hi Kelly, it's good to see you again.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Bird City Program. So Parks, oh, there we go. So Parks and Wildlife, Texas Parks and Wildlife developed a program called Texas Wildscapes about 25 years ago to, as an education and recognition tool, to help demonstrate wildlife habitat management principles on a small scale and to recognize the efforts that homeowners, schools, and businesses take on an everyday basis and to help them see results almost immediately. Texas Wildscapes has been so popular that there are very few months that go by that we don't get a call from a neighborhood or a community that requests a designation as a nature sanctuary or a demonstration site through the Texas Wildscape Program. Unfortunately, until recently, we didn't have any way to provide that recognition. But we decided to take action and partner with the Texas Audubon, Texas, and to provide an outlet for community recognition for exceptional habitat management practices in an urban area. But you may ask, why a bird city? Well, the Central Flyway is illustrated here in green. There's lots of different flyways, but the central one is the Central Flyway. It's one of the most, it is the most prolific flyway and it's a migratory route that birds take, south to north and north to south on their twice-annual migration. Significant numbers of bird species move through this area and almost all of it goes right through Texas. Almost all of Texas is touched by some part of the Central Flyway. That means that management actions that we take in this area can have significant impacts on significant numbers, hundreds of species of birds, not only in Texas, but throughout North America. So and because different species of birds do best in different types of ecological systems, managing an area for the benefit of birds actually benefits the entire ecological system. But you may ask, why a bird city? I mean, you may have been to Austin recently or maybe even our own intersection of Hasler and Highway 71 and seen a prolific amount of great tail grackles, starlings, and other bird species. And you might wonder why on earth we need to manage for bird habitat? After all, aren't they trying to get rid of birds in some areas of, in some urban areas? Well, birds are always looking for best opportunities. Birds need different types of places. So some birds do best in deep woodlands, some birds do best in grasslands, some birds do best in park areas, some birds do best in really, really urbanized areas because they know how to, or they are able to exploit french fries and hamburger buns much better than any other species of bird. And where other species of bird, like maybe chickadees or titmice or woodpeckers, don't do very well, these species are able to reproduce prolifically, aggressively, and kind of get out of control. And what we're saying is that if you manage for a healthy, diverse native ecosystem, you'll have fewer opportunities for pest species like grackles, starlings, pigeons, and European house sparrows to take over habitat. And you'll have a greater diversity and much more balanced habitat that's better for all. So what kind of birds could we hope to manage for? Well, let's just take one that's kind of fun to look at, the purple marten. Purple martens are a gregarious, lovely species that eats tons of insects and now nest almost exclusively in nesting areas that are provided by humans. They nest and breed in the dark brown areas that you see on the maps there, but then they migrate, they gather up into large roosting colonies and they migrate down into South America in that blue area. So in the late summer, and you can kind of see all the little dots in there, in the late summer, they gather up in these large colonies and just for a few weeks of the year, they will group up and prepare for their long migration south. This colony actually is in, or this roosting area is actually in Austin. And it draws people from hundreds and hundreds of miles away just so that they can see this enormous collaboration or group of purple martens. You can never see this many purple martens in one place ever in your lifetime. And it's a lovely, and you just sit in a shopping center parking lot in a fold-out chair and go buy dinner and maybe even stay in a hotel and enjoy the view. So purple marten parties are just one example of how the community, but did you know that more people, oh, I think I've got a table, more people watch, according to U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, more people watch birds than actually watch the Super Bowl. It's a very, very popular activity. Not only are they watching birds here in their own backyard, they're also traveling throughout the United States and actually across the globe in order to see different types of birds. Birding is big business fueling local economies and increasing tax revenues. Trip-related expenditures include food, lodging, transportation, and other incidental expenses. Equipment expenditures consist of binoculars, cameras, bird books, camping equipment, and other costs. So what would a bird city look like? Well, there are actually already a few programs already established, pardon me. One is Bird City Wisconsin. That was launched in 2010. It's a coalition of local Wisconsin conservation and birding organizations with the goal of increasing municipal participation, increasing recognition, increasing viable habitat, education and outreach, and reducing threat reduction, or threat reduction, increasing the lifespan of birds in cities. So what does it look like? So what they do is they have a process that's similar to the one that we proposed or that we have published, where different cities apply through providing different habitat modification activities and are recognized. They're recognized very publicly with great fanfare through public events and online as well as through publications as well. Bird City Wisconsin provides highly visible public recognition to municipalities that understand that healthy communities are the sum of many parts, including birds. So Bird City Wisconsin supports communities in their efforts to protect and manage green space, educate their citizens, build and erect nesting structures, landscape with native plants, reduce threats to birds through collisions and out dark cats, and generally makes urban areas much more hospitable to birds and people. So it's actually proved very successful. They've incorporated 107 recognized bird city communities. 20 of those are high flyers. Now, high-flying communities are those communities that have gone the extra step to do things that we wouldn't ask of any city normally, but if you wanted to take that extra step and make an extra special effort, you can do that. They represent over 2.5 million people and here's the kicker, it had a 100% retention rate. Obviously, these communities, it's a big investment to engage in Bird City Wisconsin. It's a financial investment, it's a policy investment, and they've realized that the benefits of those investments have been realized and they've retained 100% of those cities. About 1,200 bird conservation actions are conducted annually and we build, or they build community partnerships annually as well. Other similar programs include Birdtown, Pennsylvania, Birdtown, Indiana, Bird City, Minnesota, and Bird Friendly Iowa. Those are available online if you'd like to take a bigger, better, deeper dive into what they are. So what would it look like in Texas? Texas is a cooperative recognition program, cooperative recognition program through Texas Parks and Wildlife and Audubon, Texas. It's launched this year and we decided to do a slow launch and only cities who were invited to apply may be, may apply to the program this year. In the future, of course, there'll be a much larger competition. Only 14 cities were invited to apply. We expect that about three or four will be certified this year. Applications will be, are being taken now currently, started on October 15th and will be taken through December 31st. What kind of requirements are being asked? There are six actions that all prospective bird cities must complete and a minimum of four to five criteria from each of the following categories: community engagement, habitat enhancement and protection, and creating safer spaces for birds. And of course, there's the option for a high-flyer recognition as well. So some, very quickly, some examples of those common to all, a resolution for International Migratory Bird Day, a demonstration of a bird-friendly native landscape, promotion of dark sky lighting, and promotion of the use of native plants in landscaping. These are attainable, we think, by all cities and should be a common element in every bird city applicant. For community engagement, now this is a, actually this is in Austin. This is the Texas Master Nationals Capital Area Chapter. Bastrop also has a chapter, the Lost Pines Chapter. There are community-engaged adult volunteers that provide service throughout the year for natural, natural-related activities. So in community engagement, we look for things like long-term bird monitoring. What birds are here? When are they coming through? Bird education signs in natural areas and workshops on birds, wildlife, and habitat. The second category is habitat enhancement. This is a state park that was established in Tennessee specifically for birding. What kind of requirements are being asked? There are six actions that all prospective bird cities must complete, and a minimum of four to five criteria from each of the following categories: community engagement, habitat enhancement and protection, and creating safer spaces for birds. And of course, there's the option for a high flyer recognition as well. So some, very quickly, some examples of those common to all, a resolution for International Migratory Bird Day, a demonstration of a bird-friendly native landscape, promotion of dark sky lighting, and promotion of the use of native plants in landscaping. These are attainable, we think, by all cities, and should be a common element in every bird city applicant. For community engagement, now this is a, actually, this is in Austin. This is the Texas Master Naturalist Capital Area Chapter. Bastrop also has a chapter, the Lost Pines Chapter. There are community-engaged adult volunteers that provide service throughout the year for natural, um, natural-related activities. So in community engagement, we look for things like long-term bird monitoring. What birds are here? When are they coming through? Bird education signs in natural areas, and workshops on birds, wildlife, and habitat. The second category is habitat enhancement. This is a, a state park that was established in Tennessee specifically for birding. So I thought that was interesting. Habitat management plans for public lands established, and actually, we've already done that, so that's already done. Acquire, preserve, or modify habitat for birds and wildlife. Native plant lists for use by all new developments. Those are some activities to be expected in the habitat enhancement category. Oh, and invasive plant species removal. The third category is creating safer spaces for birds, and this is a picture of a building that's had glass that's been modified to prevent bird strikes. We all know the heartbreak when you hear a bird slam into a window. It causes a lot of bird mortality every year. This is one way that you can prevent it. Anyway, some examples to create safer spaces for birds are the, to prohibit the formation of feral animal colonies near parks, natural areas. Design or retrofit public buildings to reduce bird collisions. And participate in the national lights-out during spring and fall migration. Again, these are all optional activities you choose from among several opportunities. And then finally, in the high flyer distinction, create public wildscapes in public, in the low-income or underserved communities. Community planning charrette to improve bird conservation within the community. And a golf course certified as an Audubon-certified cooperative sanctuary. We have a couple to choose from in the area, I think. And public buildings would have LEED certifications, that is, green building certifications, including the Bird Collision Deterrent Credit. Again, just some examples of a high flyer, that next level designation. So, what would you get for all that investment? Of course, you get pride of accomplishment. You'd be the first, um, in the first inaugural, inaugural Bird City program, recognized. An in-person award presentation. Recognition on Audubon and Texas Parks and Wildlife social media, our website, and press releases. Bird City Texas street signs and a flag or banner. A recognition plaque suitable, suitable for display at the municipal center. An electronic copy of the logo. I think there's one more. Yeah. Hosting a Bird City Texas workshop. So, uh, at least every three years, you'd be eligible to come and join us at a large-scale workshop for, a statewide workshop. What's the timeline? So the first year, of course, would be the year of action. That's this year, the year that you would apply. The second year is the, uh, the year of certification. First year's commitment, second year of commitment, and then the third year would be when you would recertify. So, I invite Bastrop to consider applying for the Bird City Texas program. It's inaugural year, it's a high honor. We intend to promote the heck out of it. Our leadership is really excited about it. Excited about being, bringing, uh, bird tourism, nature tourism, a little bit, um, a higher priority to urban areas. So we want to have us imagine Bastrop as a leader in the Bird City Texas program with statewide recognition to promote clean, profitable, compatible net, nature tourism, enhancing the natural beauty of our area, and supporting local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kelly. Councilmember Ennis?
What is a charrette?
A charrette? What I understand, a charrette, I thought this was a city thing. A charrette is when you get together and you do a sort of a workshop. It's more of an active workshop where you investigate different scenarios and work through maybe different planning options, for example, through, through a workshop type of activity.
It's a fancy word for an open house or public engagement.
Gotcha.
The planning and zoning, uh, community, I think it, it comes from a French perspective, but it's, it's just, just collaboration.
Just goes to show how fancy I am, I guess.
I believe in Bastrop, it'll be a charrette, so.
Got it. I have one other question. Is this, is some, are some of these programs you're talking about, are those driven basically by a volunteer's group that would be formed, or is it, is it, is it dependent on city staff?
No, it's not dependent on city staff. In fact, um, what we look for is community partnerships. And so already, the, the Master Naturalist of Bastrop County, the Lost Pines Master Naturalists, the Audubon Society in Bastrop County, the native, yeah, so Dorothy's got more information on partnerships in the area.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I appreciate your question and realize we probably didn't introduce this as thoroughly as we should. This is being sponsored by the Parks Board. And so they are actively going to be the conduit, if you will, that coordinates the partnerships. And I, I think when Trey gives his presentation, he will talk more in-depth about the work they've already done, the things that we are doing that will go toward that. But there will be a couple of policy things that I don't think are scary, but you just need to own and know what it is you're agreeing to. But the Park Board will kind of be the conduit that would coordinate this.
Great.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, did you have any?
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Joe?
So I'm gonna let Dorothy come up here also, and just go in and listen to actually talk about some of the progress that the board has made, and so how the coalition is going so far, and then I'll touch on the policy stuff, and show up there as soon as we're at.
Fantastic.
So before she speaks, let me just tell you that we are very blessed to have folks like Dorothy that are energetic, passionate about these kinds of causes. I have had a meeting with her and several other board members, and she could have given the presentation that, that Kelly gave. So this is the, the, the kind of ownership that make these possible when you have a limited staff. And so I appreciate the volunteer spirit that I know this community will put forth to make this work. And I think when you get through hearing her speak, you'll understand why I'm saying that.
Thank you, city manager, mayor, council. I wanted to give just a touch of background to Kelly's presentation. This actually originated with the Parks Board. During one of our meetings this year, the discussion came up about certified habitats within the city. So the, the Parks Board created a task force to look at possibly having certified habitats throughout the city, and quickly found out after talking to state, city, and nonprofit organizations that it wasn't possible because these were all individualized, individual homeowners. There was no community. Well, one of the persons that we talked to happens to be Kelly Simone from Parks and Wildlife, and they have been proposing, um, this particular bird city. They've been working on it for two years, and it just so happened that we had a conversation with her, and she allowed us to read the draft. So what then happened was began to talk to other organizations within this community. We all know the partnerships that exist, and we are so lucky in that regard. So the Parks Task Force has now become the city collaborative working coalition. And the partners currently, and we seem to be getting more partners every day, which is wonderful. We have the Boston County Audubon Society, and Susan Leslie is here tonight, the Chamber of Commerce, the Master Gardeners, County Tourism and Economic Development, the Parks Board, of course, the Parks Department, which we have to have, and Bastrop State Park, which brings so many possibilities to us. LCRA McKinney-Ruff's just signed on, Pines and Prairies Land Trust, and the Texas Master Naturalists Lost Pines Chapter. They were one of the first groups that said, we want in. Since our first meeting, we've addressed the six criteria that are the basic criteria that Kelly just talked about. With all of these organizations, we can meet all six of them with, by June of next year. Category one, which was the community engagement, five are required, and our working group has determined that we're on the road for eight to be addressed. Category two, the habitat enhancement and protection, eight are required, and we have eight covered. Category three, creating safer spaces for birds, four are required, and we have seven covered. As a coalition, we're asking the council's permission to submit the application to Texas Parks and Wildlife for recognition as a Bird City Texas. Questions?
This would not be possible without educated persistence of that woman.
Absolutely. I, I.
Thank you.
Was able to attend the first meeting, and it was amazing. It was great to meet so many of the volunteers and find out how, I thought it was the perfect example of the different organizations that we have, and there were so many things that one organization didn't realize that the other organization could fill in that gap, and it was just so great to see everybody working together, so.
Well, if you give us the go-ahead, we have a meeting planned tomorrow, which will be the first draft of the application. So, it's in your hands.
So, city manager, you indicated, is there, do you have some concerns that we need to be aware of?
Trey's gonna follow up and outline, and it's not that they're concerned.
Stay close, Dorothy. You might be going, no, no, I've got that covered, and you don't know it.
The, the first concern that I had was, and this is just a byproduct of being in the Houston toad habitat, sometimes, no good deed goes unpunished. And so when you have a designation like that, there comes regulatory requirements that you have to own and live by. So the devil's in the details, and so I met with Dorothy and was assured that this isn't going to change the way we develop. But there are some policy requirements that are neither good nor bad, but they're policy choices. And so I never want y'all to agree to something, and then six months later, when we bring you back that something to adopt, you look at me and go, why are we doing this? We don't want to do this, and now we're married. So in full disclosure, this is just an opportunity for us to say, okay, here are the policy choices. If you're comfortable with it, then you'll move forward, and I'll, or whoever needs to execute the, uh, application will do that, and, and we'll move forward. But in this moment, we want you to just appreciate what really it means to be Bird City Bastrop.
Okay. So we won't vote tonight, but because Dorothy's done all this hard work, you're right, it's been a lot easier, but I do, I don't want you to think it's for free, because we still have some things that need to be done, and we owe you the truth, right? So what I have is the program requirements, and it's just a few slides, so I won't take much, it's only been another 30 minutes, don't, so relax.
These slides weren't in our packet. Will you add it to Dropbox after tonight?
I can do that.
Particularly since we're missing two council members. I would like them to have access. Please, thank you very much.
So for the community to form a collaborative body and group, basically what that means, we need to establish another board. You have to do that. So that's something we've bring back in December, or in December, we come in to do the resolution for this so that you can submit.
It can't be a part of the Parks Board?
I think you're gonna want to add some of those partners, I would imagine, or at least establish the coalition, but we're, we're certainly gonna have to have someone that manages it. So when me and Dorothy had this discussion a while back, it was, yes, we'll be glad to do it, as long as there's not a whole lot of extra work. And so she's taking care of all the extra work, but there's still some things that we're gonna have to address just as a, as a city.
So are we saying that it's city policy that it has to be a separate board, or it's a part of the Bird City requirement that it be?
I, I think what he's saying is you have to form a collaborative, so just like the Park Board is also your tree board, because you are a Tree City USA, this board could be a part of that. But I think Trey's point is, is well-made. When you make it a part of the Park Board, a lot of the partners that would like to be active in it may not necessarily fit the mission of the Park Board holistically. So you may choose to create a Bird City Coalition that not necessarily has to function the way the Park Board does. It just, you just need to make sure that oversight happens. So it could be part of the Park Board, it could be a standalone, but that's a policy discussion, because when Dorothy's no longer on the Park Board and somebody's not as passionate as she is, there has to be somebody that will continue to own this program and do all the work associated with making it happen.
Correct. So it has to be established and managed for the Bird City enrollment. We have to do an annual resolution, which I don't think is any problem, and hold an event. And I, I just use Arbor Day as an example. That costs us about $2,000 a year. The whole Arbor Day, that's inviting everybody, the invitations. If you plant a tree, I can envision us doing some kind of bird habitat, just like you would. It doesn't have to be that much, it's just a projected adjusted cost. So we have to create and, and demonstrate a bird-friendly native landscape. It's highly visible. That's, that's easy to do. You can see, there's actually one already in Bob Bryant Park, so that's an easy one to do. That's the Judy Ing Chimney Swift Tower. That was dedicated a few years back. But again, as we add stuff like this, I would imagine there's gonna be a cost associated with that for maintenance and annual, things of that nature. Right now, those costs are unknown, because it depends on if we have this for 10 or 15 years, what we add, what needs to be done. Just wanna make sure we're aware that this is something we're taking on for at least three to five years, and then we'll move forward.
I, I need you to come to the microphone, because they can't hear you at home. And please introduce yourself.
Just very briefly, Trey, so you do not scare the council. And I am Susan Leslie. I am again president of Bastrop County, Audubon. And for example, the Chimney Swift Tower at Bob Bryant Park is a very educational thing, it's very visible. Unfortunately, the Swifts don't like it as well, because maybe there are too many people, but as an educational tool, it's outstanding. It was built and paid for by Bastrop County, Audubon, and we have an agreement with the Park Board that was in place eight years ago, or I'm sorry, the Parks Director eight years ago, that we're in charge of maintaining it, keeping it nice-looking, updating the education. So this is an example of something that, what the city provided was the location and the approval. And it is an ongoing project with Bastrop County, Audubon. So when he shows you a slide, there's something really nice like that, don't go, was that in the budget? Because a lot of these things will not have to be in the city budget. Leslie?
And, and so I, I think the, the, the takeaway to kind of bridge the two is, I think all the partnerships that Dorothy alluded to can make this happen. What Trey is making sure you understand is it has to happen. So if your volunteers disappear tomorrow, we have to do this. So there is a creative way to do it, and all we're doing is just full disclosure, making sure when you say, oh yeah, this is great, that you understand what has to happen. And we fully anticipate that the bulk of this will be handled on a volunteer basis. But as policymakers, I want you to understand what we've signed up for, whether it's volunteer or the city pays for it.
I appreciate that. Just for clarity, if, and we won't let her, but if Dorothy was to move away, if, if nobody was interested from a volunteer standpoint, we can also just be decertified.
That's right.
Correct? I mean, there, so it's, to your point, you're just wanting us, I, I feel like you're just wanting to make your eyes wide open, and Dorothy's hearing this, and everybody realizes that it really needs to be volunteer-driven, but at some point, somebody's asking for a spot, and we gotta find it on a map, or what, you know, the city staff does end up being involved, and it could potentially be dollars, depending on what it is that we're trying to maintain.
Yes, and that's, yeah, the cost is unknown. What I'm saying is, there's never a time that we're not gonna be involved, and it's gonna take up staff resources.
And that's why you were saying that the actual cost is unknown, because you don't know if it can all be done with volunteers or not.
That's correct.
Is that, okay. Is that, or?
Yes, and, and, and just for the record, we think this is an awesome idea, and there really is a lot of tourism that can be generated from this. So the issue at this point, again, is not to scare you, it's just to make sure you're aware of what we're signing up for.
Right.
Hate to be the buzzkill, but, you know what's going on, anyway. So again, we have some, some tourism requirements with the chamber, that's one of the partners. I don't think that'd be an issue. Hosting things on the website, the list of the native birds, you know, landscaping, you can do that on our website. It'll take a little extra coordination to visit Bastrop, if they're willing to put that on there, I don't know, I just threw that up there. And the costs associated with marketing materials could impact future budgets, whatever that needs to be. Again, it's an unknown cost, but design and things like that aren't, aren't free. So we officially have to endorse the American Bird Conservancies of Cat Indoor Program, and a lot of that can be educational, which is, which is great.
So just to inject, just a tad bit of humor here. We are in the chicken and rooster relocation business. I do not want to be in the feral cat business, nor do I want everybody that has an outdoor cat calling me tomorrow that they've got to put their cat indoors. So this was one that... So, this was one that specifically I wanted him to elaborate on. So, we are not confused by what we are doing here or not doing.
So, one of the first meetings is they were reading through the requirements. It was like enforcing no cats outside at night or where. And I was like, "We are not in the..." And Dorothy said, "Have you already talked to Linda?" And I said, "No, we haven't." She said, "She said the same thing." So, we're, you know, yes. There's a line that we, I do not want to be chasing down feral cats. The council doesn't want to be spending tax dollars on that, so. But it seemed like it was more of an educational type thing.
And the Bastrop County Animal Shelter is signing on. If we will get the publications to them, they will pass it out every time a cat's adopted. And we can do something like that within the city.
Awesome. Terrific.
So, again, I don't disagree. I just, I think it's a great program. But there's a cost associated with the melon and the pamphlets and the handouts. And then, if we're gonna preach this and send it out and somebody calls and complains because there are birds being attacked, it's something we're gonna have to address and it's gonna be a code enforcement issue regardless of, you know, chasing feral cats or not. I don't know how you can send out educational programs and talk the talk and not walk the walk. So, when somebody calls in and complains that there's a cat loose in the neighborhood that's attacking the birds that they've planted plants for, now you cannot pick that cat up eventually when you get that complaint. I'm just throwing that out there. So, and it'd just be animal control.
We get those calls now, right?
I understand. I'm just making sure we're on the same page. So, again, we'll have to provide businesses for the next requirement, number six. We'll provide businesses and residents with educational outreach for communication to campaign the dark sky lighting and reducing bird collisions. They talked about that earlier. So, again, that's something we can do. We can educate the public on. That will impact where you put your streetlights. If you want some additional street lighting and things like that, the type of streetlights that you can use. It could impact the future lighting of Old Iron Bridge.
Do we have anything about dark skylighting? Because I know we've had more.
And we restrict the lumens and we make sure that it's angled at a certain way. I just want to make sure that everybody understands if traffic or if streetlights are within a certain distance and you want to add another in the middle, no, you can't do that because you've agreed to certain things. You've got national, dark sky, that kind of thing.
But we do have currently some dark sky.
We do. That's correct. Everything in the park is that way already.
I think Councilmember Ennis may have a question.
Is that defined? Is that a federal definition, dark sky?
That is definitely not a park sky question, but I bet you Jennifer could.
Well, it is in our zoning requirements. And you will remember that Buc-E's bought some light credits and we ended up changing out some lights to LED with their credit money to meet the intent of the dark sky ordinance in other parts of town.
Okay.
So, what this policy decision does is make staff have to go out and look at the type of lighting that goes in, which we're gonna do already. But it just, if there's something you really like, it may not happen for reasons like this program. So, again, Old Iron Bridge, there was a talk at one time about pointing all the lights up. I don't think that's something you could do.
But Mr. Joe, we're talking here about endorsing as opposed to adopting any kind of requirements. I mean, there's a huge difference in encouraging.
I agree.
And education.
In the education process, yes.
To me, education is one thing. Enforcement is a whole nother ball of wax, but.
I think what he's saying is we can't talk out of both sides of our mouths. So, if we are going to endorse this program, we can't be the main violator of dark skies with a lit-up LED Old Iron Bridge that puts off enough lights that we're seen in outer space just to take it to.
That's all I'm pointing out. That's correct.
That's right.
It could impact future decisions that we want to make.
The bridge is an item later, in fact, it's one of our next items. But when I recall, when we talked about lighting the bridge, I think I myself made the comment of, "We are not looking for the Las Vegas Strip." And I got quite a few citizen comments of like, "Yeah, we do not want huge." So, that is something worth looking at. And I would, I guess I want to make sure, are you guys saying if we are a bird city, we cannot put lights on the Old Iron Bridge?
What I'm saying is it's gonna impact any future lighting decisions we make.
So, let me say this a different way. When you choose to be bird city and you make the commitment to educate the importance of dark skies on your bird habitat, it's not that you can't, but the next time we go to be certified and we've made a to-do about come see these great lights that you can see at the top of the third mountain, you know, on the far west side of Texas, then it puts us in a perspective of being hypocritical. So, this is not a policy mandate of thou shalt not. But we just need to go in to say that by virtue of doing this, we're really agreeing to be respectful of the habitat. We're agreeing to promote dark skies, so we can't be that violator. Yes, you can, but it puts you at odds with your principles. So, we're not saying you're gonna enforce it, but just acknowledge that when you educate, we need to be good stewards of that education.
And I'll tell you, this is something we do in all our city parks currently. This is not something strange to us. We do this in every, we are probably really close because of Dorothy and the way we take care of the habitat in the parks anyways. There's a lot of nature areas. It's great, but it's gonna impact your tree decisions. It's gonna impact your native plants. It can impact the time, the type, the time of year the trees could be removed, cut down, nesting, that kind of thing, migratory times of year. It just has operational impact. That's all I'm letting everybody know. So, again, we just talked about this, we're promoting native use of plants, which we do already in the parks. This is a list that I imagine we would be putting together anyway with the code rewrites. So, we need to develop a plant list, you know, for the public and commercial and residential use, promote it on the website and any other city media outlets that we have. And then the budgetary would just be the educational materials and the staff time and resources that we use to get this done.
Trey?
Yes?
A plant life will be recommended, not required, right?
That's correct. We would, I would think we would be committing ourselves to this as the city in each flower bed that we do or something along that.
As a city, in the plants, the city plants, we're not gonna go out and tell Joe Blow out here that he has to put in a certain kind of shrub around his house.
That's correct. But we'll educate you on what's native to this area and what's preferred.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, we're providing.
Which I think is something the master gardeners would like to do anyway, encourage folks to use native plants and attract butterflies and, you know, drought-resistant and not. That's why I think there's a coalition, there's a whole lot of this that goes together, you know.
This is just one more box that if, and I'll go back to, you know, Las Vegas Strip on the bridge just because people can visualize what that would look like. It's just one more thing that when we bring you, we've got one more thing to consider and factor in. Again, it's not that we're in opposition. We just owed you this conversation today and not six months from now when we think that's a really good idea. And had we known that, we might not have thought this was a grand idea. That's all this exercise is.
This is not an endorsement either way.
We're preventing the, but you didn't say.
That's correct.
Well, let me correct that. You're trying to prevent.
Oh, no. I'm happy to sit and watch this with you again if needed.
So, we can talk about this again. But the last requirement is to, you know, promote information and importance to controlling invasive species, both plant and animal. So, just like we talked about earlier, you would be in the feral cat business in the park if something like that was to happen. There's no way that you could, the wildlife or the plants in the park.
But let's talk about what that might look like. In every community, there are folks that are very passionate about the feral cats. And we would engage a volunteer group to come out in that instance and help us appropriately trap and remove.
Correct.
And move the feral cats. So, yes, that would happen, but in a situation we've already talked about, it won't be us doing it because we've got all the animals we can to relocate.
I agree.
But it will be a commitment to create another partnership with another group to help us with that challenge.
What I don't want to do is make the park a great habitat, all the birds fly in, and then we still have to manage those species. So, you just need to know that. So, whatever comes in, we have to make sure that we manage what's there. The impact of adopting the policy, as I said again, was just the resources, a slight budgetary impact. Here's some examples of what it costs me to mail out a newsletter. This is not the exact amount. These are pretty conservative numbers because we have so much help. What's mail-out newsletters? We did four per year quarterly, which is one of the requirements for category one, I believe. It's $1,300 every time we mail that out. I put $2,000 per event, figured we'd have at least two events a year. Again, we get less than that. Your staff time and that's just managing some of the smaller things that we have to take care of. And then 2,500 per signage that identifies plants and bird species, which is also one of the other requirements.
So, just in closing, we owed you full disclosure, but I am very happy to endorse this program and tell you I think it's absolutely worth this and more. I think that this absolutely ties in the whole native aspects of the things in our community that we're very proud of and helps add one more visitor experience so that people can come to Bastrop and enjoy the things that we all love about this community. The fortunate aspect of this is there is a lot of institutionalized partners, not just folks that think this is a great idea, but folks that have been together for years and years and years that have a track record of doing this. So, there's ways for us to leverage all of this. And I think with some time that we'll be very proud to be a bird city. And it will prove to be, I think, one of the economic draws that allows people to enjoy our outdoors without having to be athletic or into hiking. It gives them a very passive, but yet very gratifying, satisfying experience to follow the birding. So, from a staff perspective, we wholeheartedly support this, but owed you a honest conversation.
Three of the four big birding parks in Bastrop County are actually here in the city. One's the State Park, one's Bob Bryant, the other is Fisherman's, and it's the other McKinney-Rupp. Is that right? So, just outside the city limits.
Did you hear him, Councilmember Ennis? Okay.
That's it. That's all I've got.
Mayor Protem Nelson, since you're the Parks Liaison, would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, every time we have a Parks Board meeting, Dorothy has brought this up and every time she's added more and more to the conversation. And the fact that this council has made a commitment to create the healthy atmosphere for collaboration and Dorothy has taken that to the optimum level and has created this great group that's going to carry this thing forward. And I'm fully supportive and just really appreciate the work that's been done thus far.
Councilmember Rogers is in it. Councilmember Rogers?
I'm all for it.
Councilmember Ennis?
Ready to bring it back for dissent, for approval.
So, it seems, and Dorothy, I'm super glad that you're here, hearing the conversation because I think it would be great to get some feedback on the lighting of the bridge and what are, what can you do, what can you not do? I mean, I understand the hypocrisy part, but we also just need to, we want to light the bridge. It's our iconic bridge. So, we need, instead of, Linda's making an excellent point of you can't talk out of both sides of your mouth. So, if we want to do that, should that keep us from doing it or is there a way to incorporate that into it? The estimates that you had, Dorothy, I would encourage, and I'm sure that you guys are already thinking of, that there are ways. I think a lot of those organizations send out newsletters and so there may be a way to take care of that. If you haven't met Susan Smith, she's gonna present in a little bit and do, you know, have the conversation with Visit Bastrop. So, when it comes back with the first application, it would be great if we could address some of those things. And I also think it's important that, I know that you will do such an excellent job that when the application gets submitted that we will be accepted. And I'm counting on us being one of the first cities. But if, as the policy shakes out, if we don't, if we aren't accepted, then we aren't accepted. If we are, it sounds like, Trey, I hear you and Linda, you'll be in whatever means you choose, being able to say, "The Bird City cost us X amount of dollars so that in three years that the council's looking at recertification, we won't have so many don't know what that counts because then we'll have experience and we'll know." Is that a reasonable assumption?
That's right. And so, this will come back as a resolution supporting this program and the application on your December 11th agenda.
And Dorothy, as I recall, the application's due on the 31st. Is that, so the December 11th works for everybody?
It's actually due on the 17th.
Ah, okay.
So, we are working under a little stress, like you guys do all the time.
Well, Trey, thank you so much. Counsel, any other comment? And thank you, Kelly, for your presentation and Dorothy and.
One other question for Dorothy. Dorothy, as we look at the oversight of this group, we had the discussion whether it should be under the purview of the Parks Department or create another coalition oversight. What would you like to see, that oversight body?
How about all of us meet tomorrow like we were planning on doing and discussing it and maybe making a recommendation there. You know, Wisconsin, Indiana, those other states, I'm sure they have addressed a similar issue and we might be able to give a recommendation. I'd hate to say something off the top of my.
I would recommend then that you get with Trey and we'll talk about it and we'll include that in the resolution that they adopt.
Okay. One thing to address your dark skies concerns, Susan, who came to the podium earlier, she has a wealth of information about that as well as templates from other communities that have addressed that. And then, of course, Audubon has a wealth of material as well. So, we'll be getting that to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Susan. All right, we are moving on to item 4F, Presentation of the 2018 Texas Downtown Association's Spirit of Downtown Presidents Award. Ms. O'Brien?
Mayor, Counsel, I'm excited to be able to share this award with you guys and the community tonight. Recently, the Texas Downtown Association's Annual Presidents Awards finalists were announced in September and Bastrop took home two finalists nods. One for Best Economic Game Changer for the creation of the Hospitality in Downtown Department and then a nod for the Spirit of Downtown Award for our community's efforts with the Small Business Revolution and hashtag MyBastrop. We were honored and delighted that the Small Business Revolution efforts were selected as an award winner at the Texas Downtown Association Conference in Corpus Christi in early November. Linda was with me to receive. I just wanted to take a moment tonight to thank everyone that joined us in our efforts. It was certainly not just a community-wide effort, but also a regional effort and friends and family and partners and regional connections from across the state that helped us. So, I did want to kind of just do a little overview of the media success that we gained and talk about that we had 43 original videos created in about a 45-day timeframe. They garnered over almost 160,000 views and reached over 3 million people just on the city's social media channels. So, that doesn't count the shares and increase in engagement from other partners and friends that shared those. We had 13 special events in less than 60 days and we estimate hundreds upon hundreds of volunteer hours donated by our community members who learned hashtag and tweet and went to Austin and delivered cupcakes to the news outlets for us. That value is over $35,000. And then we also garnered 54 media stories, traditionally, traditional media stories with almost 15 million impressions totaling a value of almost $253,000. I know we talk a lot that we didn't win, I don't know what we really won. And it seems like it was a lot longer than a year ago. It's actually shorter than a year, kind of seems like a lifetime away. But it was a very special time and I'm delighted to be able to present this to you guys tonight and the community.
Mayor Protem Nelson said hashtag, "Thank you, Texas Downtown Association." Okay, we will, Counsel, it's 8:15. Is everybody okay or do you need a break? Everybody's okay. We are on item 6B, Receive Monthly Report from Visit Bastrop. Ms. Smith?
Good evening, Councilmembers, City Managers.
Good evening, Councilmembers, City Manager, Mayor Schrader. I'd like to start out by sharing some of our website and social media summaries from the month of October. Do we have my, I was going to say, great, thanks. Okay, so, I just want to start out by saying, we're reporting on the month of October, and this was my first full month here as part of Visit Bassdrop. So, very proud of what we've accomplished in this one month timeframe. Basically, our Facebook and Instagram posts are doing really well. Our followers are continuing to increase, our impressions are great. We had a gap campaign that was put in place prior to my arrival, and that was for the, from mid-July to mid-October. And that campaign is going, was going through, is considered a gap, to fill the gap until the leadership got in place for us to be able to decide which way we were going to go. So, to let everyone know, we are in the process right now of reviewing the marketing RFP for October forward, or November forward at this point, and we should have that finalized within just a few weeks, and we'll begin to implement that, and we'll have a full report on that at our January City Council meeting. The photo that you see was the most popular post on Facebook, and interestingly enough, our traffic came from, mostly came from the Austin area. So, next, we have our Public Relations Summary. So, for the month of October, we promoted the Scream Hollow Wicked Halloween Park, and had some roundup inclusions with some monthly, through the Spectrum News, with monthly visits of, anticipated of 1.3 million, estimated, and their coverage is about 7.85, 7,000 views that they have in coverage. So, these are the, and then below that are the destination media pitches that we sent out for potential article generation. We'll be tracking the percent as we move forward of the article, the potential article generation versus what actually got picked up. So, we'll be able to compare those numbers to what we expected our views to be, and what we actually got for views as we move forward. The Public Relations Summary again, for October, was the 13th Annual Veterans Day Car Show, the media alert that was sent out. We had several, several ways of event coverage that was generated. We won't have those numbers and the reach and the views until they come out in the November report. So, but that's what we did to promote that, the Veterans Car Day show, and from what I heard and saw, it was a great event. Those are, on the right, you'll see some event submission calendar listing outlets. Those is where we actually listed events that was happening in Bassdrop to those particular listings, if you will. So, from the page before and this page, we had a reach, we reached over, around 3.4 million people to tell our story about Bassdrop in the month of October. The lodging report, or also known as the STAR report, everything looks great. There was one little blip in percent change of ADR over the, from the year over year, so it's basically your last 12 months, which was down 0.3%. And that could be anything due to holidays, promotions, or any kind of event that might have been happening the year before. But, all of our numbers look great. Our occupancy's up, ADR's up, percent of ADR's up, everything's on the up and up, so it's great. And this report reports for September, even though we are reporting October activity. So, just to make that clarification. And then, last month, I mentioned that we would be starting, you'd start to see a sales report that looks like this. So, what we put together is, this is the first report, is basically leads and lead room nights. So, these are leads that either Visit Bassdrop brought in, or they came into us some way, maybe through associations that we're part of, or groups that we're part of. Service request leads are, say a lead comes into town, a business, or a group comes into town, and they want to have a dinner off-site, or they need transportation. It's something that doesn't have any heads and beds related to it, so it's, it could be an off-site, anything that they're using, an attraction, rafting, anything like that. So, we will start to track those as well. And then, if a lead turns to a definite, then we will track it as a definite, once it's been signed by the particular property, and then count the number of room nights they contracted for. We will also be able to tell you the contract value, the cumulative contract value of those leads, of the definites, and also be able to tell you how many of the service requests went definite. So, this isn't a great picture for the first month, but it's the first month that we actually tried, we have been tracking. So, this will get better and better and better, because there's been no tracking mechanism in place prior to this. So, three leads came in, in October. They totaled in the amount of 805 room nights. There was one service request lead that came with it, one definite, and the contract value of that definite was $23,000. And there was one service request definite, I'm sorry, service request definite was for $23,000. The actual definite, we don't have the room nights yet, so I can't tell you what the contract value is on that. So, of those three leads, we lost three leads. We lost all 805 room nights. The reasons for that were, the planner never responded back to the property, and/or they chose another location to go to. We will be working closer with the properties to get more specific information, like what other property did they choose? Why did they choose that other property? What was it about the other property? Was it that they wanted to go skiing, and they couldn't do that here? You know, what is it that makes up those? So, this, this report will get much more detailed as we move along, but I think we're starting out, at least in a really good spot, and a good way to be able to count those. Also, you'll see up there in the little key box is the assists. So, if we assist a property, particularly the Hyatt, if we assist with them bringing in business, if they're maybe needing something to close this business that they can't do, they bring us in, and we help them close the business, we will count that as an assist as well. So, again, these numbers are just going to get better and better as we go along each month. Before I just kind of wrap this up, I just want to mention some of the things that we also did in the month of October. I attended the First Responders Appreciation Lunch. I attended my, I think it's my second or third session of Best Leadership Texas Travel Industry Association Meeting, where I met with senators and legislators to talk about tourism and the effects on our, the tourism has on our economy, and, which was real great for me to be able to put faces and places together. We also went out to bid for a local artist for renderings of, for the background of our logo, so we should have some finalized renderings of that, that are very nice to have the local artists have done. We're finalizing our marketing plan, as I mentioned. We're finalizing the business plan, which I will present to Counsel in January. I attended the Austin Filmmakers Meetup, or I should say, I attempted to, flat tire. Sightseeing in the, and then I've been doing a lot of sightseeing in the eyes of a tourist. So, socially, my first month here, I've been going out and playing the role of a tourist and to see what Bassdrop has to offer, and doing a little mystery shopping, and that's been, it's been a lot of fun, touring some of the attractions. And if I could just close, oh, I also want to say, we've also instituted some ways that the public, if you want to know what we're doing, and have some questions, or some ideas, or anything you want to share with me, you can always reach out to me at my office. But also, we're also, we are now putting it in the monthly Chamber of Commerce newsletter that would actually, I think, just went out yesterday. There will be a section in there summarizing some of Visit Bassdrop's achievements for the month prior. And then, also, you're welcome to come to any of our Board of Directors meetings, which are listed on our website, and the City Council meetings, as well as stopping by my office. So, there's a bunch of different ways that you can learn about what we're doing and what our goals are for the future. So, before I wrap this up, I just want to, using the City Manager's terms, I want to interject a little humor here. I did learn one really important thing in the last month, and that was from Mayor Protem. I learned, I learned how to say, "I'm fixing to leave, y'all." Did I do that right?
Continue practicing.
So, anyway, thank you. It's been a great first month here, and I look forward to many more productive months. Any questions?
Well, Susan, you forgot to list one of your accomplishments, that you were a Wasselfest judge.
But that wasn't in October.
Oh, so I don't get to hear that thing. But, you really jumped right in and just...
But I was the Wasselfest judge in November, and that was a lot of fun.
Yeah, she did a great job.
Oh, and Friday night football, I have so many things to share. Wait until January, I'll get you all caught up.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Smith?
Very nice report. Thank you.
Thanks. Great job, and thank you for the explanations, and we look forward to the next month's report.
Yeah, so I'll see you all in January.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to Item 6C, Receive Monthly Development Update. Mr. Jones?
Mayor and Counsel, this is...
Mayor and Counsel, this is the first time that Matt has done this. There was a question on PowerPoint presentations, and so, he has one tonight, and in the future, it will be in the packet. But, this is kind of a starting point, and we will build on that. So, with that, our new Planning and Development Director, Matt Jones, I think this is your first official presentation.
Yes, it is. Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, City Counsel. This is my first official presentation to you, Counsel. This is, from what I understand, the first development update you all have received. So, to Linda's point, this will probably evolve as we move along and figure out what information you all like to hear and what we need to provide to you. So, I do imagine that evolving as we go along. So, this is for the month of October, actually my first full month here in the city of Bassdrop also. So, being the first one, I wanted to share with you all the Planning and Developments, mission statement, and our purpose. So, our mission is to, preserving the past while facilitating growth and quality of life in harmony with the vision for the city of Bassdrop's future. So, that's important to me and to the department, because that we're facilitating. To me, that's, that's our mission as a development department. We're there to facilitate growth if it's in compliance with our comprehensive plan. So, I think that that's key, and it ties back into our comp plan and to some of our goals there. The purpose, to maximize the community's strengths and minimize weaknesses, protect property rights and enhance property values, anticipate growth and provide adequate public facilities and services, balance economic growth with quality of life issues, and avoid unmanageable concentrations or dispersal of population, which kind of ties back into what we're doing right now with the, with our code update. So, I, I think it's very fitting for some of the things that we're currently doing right now as a community. So, those are our mission and purpose for our department. Just some very quick kind of things that we've done over the month. I know you've seen some of this information before, but I think it's also good to share with those listening at home and some others. So, for the month of October, in our department, we had 236 visitors at our counter. So, we stayed pretty busy up front, opened the door with permitting questions, or development questions, or sign questions, or sometimes questions that they just don't know where else to go to, so they wind up in our department. So, we stayed pretty busy on that end. We issued 64 permits, and we also held 18 pre-application meetings for the month of October. So, current projects, one of the things that we're doing right now, I would say the major things that we're doing right now, are working on our, I won't say that we don't have processes, but there's always room for improvement, and that's exactly what we're doing right now. So, and back to our mission, it's to facilitate development. And with that, we want everybody that walks through our door, from pre-application meeting to a decision at City Council, to have a quality experience when they're dealing with our department. And a part of that is having good processes. We're spending a lot of time right now looking at our codes, and we want our processes to match that. We want to make sure that those are good as well. So, we're updating our Development Review Committee and Process, we'll be streamlining that. We're going to draft a development schedule that is not only holds developers accountable on when they get things to us, but also when we get things back to them. So, if you submit a plan on this date, this is when we'll review it, and this is when you can expect your comments. And vice, also likewise, that also holds them with the expectation on when they can see their development cases move forward. And so, we'll, we'll implement that along with the Development Review, and also some flow charts that will make it easy to follow the process from walking through the door the first time, or maybe picking up the phone, all the way through, through City Council. And the goal of that, again, is to have a predictable and reliable experience when you're dealing with us, to help kind of take some of that confusion out. You'll be seeing some of those very soon. Another thing we're working on right now are updates to our codes. So, right now, we're on 2012 codes. There's much newer codes, 2018, that are out there. Our building official is right now kind of analyzing those, the major changes from 2015 and 2012. So, when we bring those for you to consider adopting, maybe some localized amendments with those codes. And so, that's one thing that, that our department's working on right now, looking at, is our building codes, which would be the International Building Code, Residential Code, et cetera.
And let me interject just a moment. The development code process will be completed in the second half of calendar year 2019. We're going to adopt our zoning ordinance and our sign code in March, and then we'll start the second phase of that process. This is where your Construction and Standards Board will have a role. So, all of the local amendments that he's talking about, that David will review, your Construction Standards Board are made up of your trade professionals, your engineers, and folks like that. And the ordinance that the mayor follows to appoint has specific trades so that all of them are represented, and that's really their function. They've not met in the last couple of years, because there haven't been any codes for them to update or to be involved in. So, when these recommendations he's talking about comes back to you, it will have been vetted with the board you appointed to do this and their level of expertise. But, this will happen in the second half of 2019.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Some of our staff attended some training programs this month. Our building official, David, was able to have a couple opportunities. He attended the Central Texas Building Professionals Institute there in Austin, where he was able to get some needed education credits for his plumbing inspection certification, and also some commercial building occupancy classes that he took. He was also attended the Construction Exam Center Training for his Mechanical Plans Examiner Certification. So, I will say that David's been welcome to the department. I'm sure you all can appreciate that, and I have to thank our City Manager for that hire, so he's been awesome to work with. Two of our people also attended the 2018 Annual Texas American Planning Association Conference. It was down in Galveston this year. I know that Planning Month has gone and passed, and we were recognized, but I do have to say that, you know, we were recognized at that conference in the month of October, one of 39 cities in the state of Texas to be recognized for planning excellence. That's not just city staff, that also takes a look at your, your commissions, so your P&amp;Z commissions, level of training, and things that you provide to them. So, we were proud to receive that honor this year, and Allison and Jennifer were able to attend that conference. And then, I'd be remiss if I did not mention this, I think. This is for everybody here, and anybody who might be listening or viewing. We had a good workshop last night with our development community for building Bassdrop, but I'm not going to spoil that, because that was November, so don't want to get ahead of myself. But please, please attend Thursday and Friday. We have our design rodeos for our Building Bassdrop Initiative. So, the 29th and 30th, they'll be at 924 Main Street. We will be there for the better part of the day from 10:00 a.m. till 8:00 p.m., doing a different variety of tabletop work sessions, and then the end of the day from 5:00 to 8:00 will be a more of an interactive type presentation. So, 29th and 30th, Thursday and Friday, please come out and join us.
Before you leave that, Matt, I'm not regulated by November, so I'm going to steal your thunder. One of the things that I want to make a point of talking about is, last night was profoundly important, because we have pledged, not only from a policy perspective, but operationally, that we're going to engage our stakeholders, and we're going to listen. And so, we had a meeting with our development community, and the mayor and I were talking about this this afternoon. We got some really good information, some very thought-provoking, huh? We never thought about. We got some really good information, some very thought-provoking "huh! We never thought about that." And we've been able to solve some challenges today that we knew we had but weren't sure what we were going to do about it. And man, last night just really was wow! That's how we need to do this, and it came from the development community. Yesterday morning, we took a mobility tour. We have a resident that has some physical limitations and is limited to getting around town with her wheelchair that's motorized. And she'd been engaging with us on Facebook, expressing her frustration. So there was an entire team of staff that went out and followed her on her wheelchair and now appreciate that she is indeed correct. Oftentimes, we have a problem, and so we go out there to say, to solve the problem, which in a lot of cases is drainage, and we don't really stop to think about the unintended consequences of that solution and the trade-off of we solved one problem but we created it for another. So all of that to say that it's really important that this community engage Thursday and Friday because we're listening.
Yes.
But we can't hear if you don't come and talk. And you have to come and engage, and there will be a lot of opportunities to give feedback throughout the day. And it's intended to be thought-provoking and to get buy-in, and also for you to say, no, we just flat don't like that. That's not what we had in mind, if that's what comes from this. So it's really, really important. So for a lot of people that think, you know, cities just do this to box check. Well, some do, but we're not. We're listening, we're learning. The mayor talks all the time about we reserve the right to learn, and it's our journey to take. We're learning a lot. So don't deny us the opportunity to hear you and be able to incorporate what you have to share, but you have to come participate to do that.
You have to come, ma'am. That's right.
I would like to just add that it's not a come read a novel and then give us some feedback because for some folks, not everyone's familiar with what is included in the regulations, and we're not talking about passing out novels for everyone to read and make the progress. There will be pictures of things, there will be drawings of things. It will be interactive and should be interesting for anybody who lives in the community.
And there will actually be illustrators parked at tables so as the participants engage in, well, I'd like to see this, I'd like to see that. There will be folks literally there illustrating that going, is that what you had in mind? Well, yes, yes, it is. Or no, you missed that, it needs to be that. So we're visual. That's right.
I just didn't want folks to think that it was going to be come read something, and we're going to write a bunch of stuff. So it should be, it should be really interesting, and as I was quoted in the paper as saying that the decisions that we make in the next few months are going to impact the community for decades. And so we really want the community to come out.
No, it'll be a fun, exciting evening, two days. And for people who are artistically challenged like me, that's very neat to be able to come and put your words and then have an artist live time put those words into a visual that will help us shape the future. So it'll be very neat.
I think it'll be another first for Bastrop. I don't think we've ever done anything like this before.
Not many people have. So with that, any comments or questions?
Counsel?
Great job.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
The next, in the next month, it would be helpful, sometimes the things I could ask is like, how many projects are ongoing, you know, and I don't want you to have to do 27 pages worth, but just an idea of like, there's this many active projects, or there's this many lots that are past final plat or under construction. Some of those big numbers, those are things that the community asks us about and thinks that we should, and it would be nice to have that gathered up. Is that making sense of, and I'm not trying to make it over...
And the other thing that, the other thing that he will do when it's appropriate is when we have projects that go through that will be of interest, he'll announce them here. A lot of times, we, you know, are out and about. People go, what's being built at the corner of so-and-so and so-and-so? Well, when it's appropriate, he'll tell you here what's going on at the corner of so-and-so.
We have a couple of commercial projects that'll be ready, so we'll have some more information like that in the upcoming months.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Matt. Appreciate it very much. Counsel, it is 8:41, and we are going to take a very short four-minute recess, and we will be back at 8:45. It's 8:41. We are in recess. We will come back and start with citizens' comments. Regular session. We are on item number seven, citizens' comments. I have one person signed up for citizens' comments, Rhonda Van Diver.
I was going to speak on 6A. That was on the card.
Yes, ma'am. We don't normally take comments because we're just getting information for the first time, and we weren't making any decisions, and that was why I explained the comment portion of the community. There will absolutely be an opportunity for citizen comment before counsel takes a vote on that item.
Okay. What y'all, what y'all say about the importance of selecting your experts? I agree with. I want to remind you all that the city hired Kim Lee Horn to do a study in 2016. This is really important. The study...
Ms. Van Diver, I appreciate that. I just want to remind you that you have three minutes, so you might keep that in mind when you're making your comments. And also, if you could, before, when you are done with your three minutes, it's not a part of your three-minute time, but I need your address as a part of this document.
You're not getting that. You're not getting my address. Sorry. You're not getting my address.
City Attorney?
Mayor, it's the council standard policy that whoever wants to speak during citizen comment is allowed to. They don't have to be a resident of the city, but it has been your policy to require that they provide their name and their address.
Would you like to know why? Why you're not getting my address?
Ms. Van Diver, I think I'd like to give you an opportunity to say what you have to say in three minutes. And I would appreciate the next time that you come to counsel if you would comply with the rules that counsel has asked all the other citizens to comply with.
For my safety, you don't need my address.
Okay, so Ms. Van Diver, your three minutes has started. Thank you.
This report, this traffic study, first starts with a speed test performed by Trey. It said that 95% of the drivers were doing 30 miles an hour between Spring Street and Farm. I would encourage each and every one of you to go try it. Buckle up tight and hope that your airbags don't deploy. Please try it. It is full of discrepancies. This is a forever thing. We can't make it go away. You know how the lines are placed in order to produce this count? I'm assuming you do because you have an engineering background, right?
Ms. Van Diver, the citizens' comments is for you to make comments, and counsel isn't going to engage because this isn't an agenda item. If you would like clarification, or if you want to submit a question, we can do that as a part of it. But we're not going to engage in the, we're not going to debate an item that hasn't been posted on the agenda that the rest of the community might want to speak on.
Well, let's post it. Let's do that. I think that would be important. Don't you? I think it's very important.
I'm not certain what policy question you're wanting counsel to consider, but if you would like to state that policy item you would like us to consider, then we would consider putting it on the agenda.
Let's just workshop all of it publicly. Let's workshop all of this publicly, okay? Let's do that.
I don't think there's, I don't know what we would be workshopping, so I would encourage you to submit something.
We would be workshopping this bogus report. We would be workshopping everything that happened that we're now being told to lie about.
The, what's the date of the report that you're holding?
The date, it was backdated to February 16th, 2016, after this guy told Councilmember Jones that it didn't exist.
Okay, Ms. Van Diver, I'm going to stop you right there. I didn't fully, I didn't fully understand which report you were referring to. So I can tell you that after that report, there is a settlement agreement with the city of Bastrop and you...
It doesn't change this.
Yes, ma'am. I need to be able to finish. That settlement agreement was a way to move forward from the date that that settlement agreement was signed, and this counsel has said that our city attorney would represent us regarding that settlement agreement. So I would encourage you or your attorney to interact with our attorney.
Allegedly, he's telling the employees they can't even talk to me about my utility account. So just, I guess, turn it all off. This is not, this is not...
Ms. Van Diver, we are very clear in our citizen comments that we, and you've seen it, it is published on our agenda. It's not the intention for us to demean anyone, to talk negatively about anyone, to do a public slur. And so we're not going to accuse...
What's the due process then? I mean, what is due process when you won't allow your citizens to come with you with concerns?
I, our, all of our citizens can bring concerns to us with a policy question. Your specific question is about a document that exists, that's executed, that is litigation, and policy decision has been made by this counsel.
That doesn't have anything to do with now.
The policy decision has been made by this counsel that our city attorney will represent us with respect to your agreement.
That has nothing to do with where we're at now.
Well, counsel has made a unanimous decision.
I think the counsel deserves to hear the story and figure out where we're at now.
Ms. Van Diver, the counsel's well aware of the settlement agreement, and I, again, I would encourage you or your attorney to work with our attorney. Is there, your time has expired, but out of respect for you, is there any other topic you would like to discuss with this counsel regarding policy?
No, I think you've made yourself pretty clear.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We will now be moving on to the consent agenda. Counsel, do you have anything you'd like to pull from the consent agenda? Madam Secretary, if you will please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda is as follows. Consider action to approve City Council minutes from the November 13th, 2018, regular meeting and November 13th, 2012, special meeting. Item 8B. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R2018-111 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving of the Cal Park Section 3F final plat being 1.75 acres out of the Mosaic Ruins Drive survey. Abstract 56 located east of the extension of Treadside Lane within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, is shown in Exhibit A, repealing all conflicting resolutions and providing an effective date. Item 8C. Consider action to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 2018-33 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, granting a conditional use permit to allow a manufactured house on 01472 acres of Barnlot 65, east of Main Street located at 1501 State Highway 95, an area zone agriculture open space within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, is shown in Exhibit A and B, setting up conditions including several building calls establishing effective date. Item 8D. Consider action to approve the second reading of Ordinance 2018-31, making budget for the fiscal year 2019 in accordance with existing statutory requirements appropriating various amounts of energy and net debt, in Exhibit A, repealing all prior ordinances in action and simple third rail and providing foreign text of authority.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, I would bring to your attention that there are updated meeting minutes for November 13th, and I think everybody got a chance to review those, but you will be voting on what was put at the dais tonight, and that's what would be recorded for the public to see should you choose to approve it.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda with the amended minutes from the last City Council meeting.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Nelson.
Mayor. I would like to second, but I do want to ask, did we ask if any one of our citizens would like to vote?
I happen to know that three of them are waiting for this to be approved, but you're right. Did anybody want something to be pulled? Thank you, Councilmember Ennis, just for process standpoint.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Counsel. The motion passes unanimously with a 3-0 vote. Just a reminder to the community, we are a quorum with four people here on the dais, and a vote of three is what would be required if we were at full quorum. So the vote of three is what it takes to pass tonight. We'd have the three votes, so it is passed. Thank you, gentlemen. And we are now moving on to items for individual consideration. Item 9A. Consider action and approve Resolution Number 2018-114 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, making determinations regarding certain project-specific exceptions and/or exemptions as provided by Emergency Ordinance 2018-1, Section 8, and Emergency Ordinance 2018-2, Section 7. Counsel, you had a stack of bills from Ms. Bills. Ms. Bills, it's yours.
Tonight, we have three different exemptions to consider. The first is out actually in our extraterritorial jurisdiction at 294 Shiloh Road. What they will actually be processing through us is a minor plat. They deed-divided out part of the property earlier this year, so they actually have to come in per our regulations for a plat before the county can issue permits. They previously had a house on this lot earlier this year that they've just demoed. So looking at the previous cover increase, they'll be putting on a new 2,356-square-foot house. There's already an existing driveway and shed on the property. Taking into consideration the previous foundation and things that were pulled up that will be put on, the engineer estimated that there will be no new impact from what was there earlier this year. They are moving the house over slightly from the previous location. You can see the area. It's off of Shiloh Road, kind of in the middle of some other residential development out in the county. Currently, they've, they're kind of graded the lot, getting ready to put on the new house eventually. And the drainage study showed that the existing drainage pattern drains underneath the street through two 48-inch culverts. And this is where the drainage patterns get fun because it actually winds around, goes across Shiloh Road again, and then eventually feeds in under our new Shiloh Road bridge. So that's kind of the fun in that area, that the drainage actually goes north and then finally comes south again. So we have very detailed engineers that give us fun maps. So that would be the first exemption request.
Counsel, we've done this for a while, so we know that we, it's, we take them one at a time. It's a lot of information. Do you have any questions for Ms. Bills, or do you need just a couple minutes to look at things? I move to approve.
Sir?
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
The house that's on there, is it been, is been removed now?
It's been removed already.
So what we're looking at is, that would be vacant, right?
Yeah, it's a vacant lot right now that they'll be putting a new, almost 2,400-square-foot, single-family home onto.
Okay.
And it's about a three-acre lot, so it's fairly large.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve 294 Shiloh Road by Councilmember Rogers and a second by Mayor Protem Nelson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. The motion passes unanimously, 3-0. We are now moving on to 1504 Farm Street.
So yes, there is, this lot is an existing single-family house that the property was deed-divided out sometime in the late '90s, so it doesn't meet our lot of record requirements. And they are wanting to put a new 400-square-foot shed that will need permitted to do that, so they'll have to file a minor plat and also the building permits for the shed. The house is currently under renovation, which that did not require any exemption just for the renovation permits. The lot is a little over half... Uh, the, the lot is a little over half an acre in size. Uh, the increase from the new shed will be, uh, about one and a half percent of increased impervious cover, with, um, a small amount of additional increase and runoff of .6, uh, cubic feet per second.
.06.
.06, sorry, .06. Uh, you can see the larger area, um, the, the, my pointer doesn't work on the screen, you can see to the northwest, that's, uh, Gill's Branch is the creek that actually runs by. It's a house, and the shed will go off to the right side. Um, the, their survey shows, and they've actually, the FEMA has an error on the flood plane and actually shows it on the wrong side of the property, which is something the, uh, survey and engineer are actually having to do a correction, uh, with FEMA to move, 'cause you can see the creek clearly curves on the north side of the property, and they're showing the flood plane on the southeast part of the property. So, uh, that, that's something that during the plating process, the engineer is going to submit a correction for, um, but the new shed will go on that side, and it will not be in the floodway, um, since the creek is actually on the other side of the property. The drain, drainage all does drain, uh, Gill's Branch, and then goes under Farm Street through two, uh, uh, actually, three box culverts, so. And that's, and that's all I would have.
Council, do you have any questions for Ms. Bills regarding 1504 Farm Street?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, 3-0. Thank you, Council. We are now moving to the final, um, item, which is 1305 Water Street.
Yes, so this is an existing single-family house, and what they are wishing to install is a 400-square-foot in-ground pool with 215 square foot of the concrete decking around the pool area. Uh, the lot is .28 acres in size. Um, they'll be adding a, the, a total of 615 square feet, which is about 4.5% increase in impervious cover on this lot. Um, the, uh, additional, uh, the engineer calculated that there will be no impact from this, um, this development, uh, from the pool. A lot of times pools actually do hold some amount of the water to, you know, to a point, and so, um, a lot of different regulations treat them differently, but it will, could potentially change the, um, drainage in that area. There is a storm inlet drain, uh, down Water Street that, um, the water from the gutter will go into, and they are going to install, um, a, a drain pipe just to make sure that the water goes to the street and not to their neighbors.
Did they do a curb cut, or what? When they, when they, uh, drain the water out to the street, did they do a, do they do a curb-
They'll have to submit plans, and we'll review those, uh, how they're, how they're gonna install that.
Okay.
That'll come in with the full, full permit.
Any other questions for Ms. Bills?
And that will include the, um, backwashing it?
Draining the pool when they are cleaning? I believe so, and that's something we'll have to review through our, through our building permit process, how much of that's allowed into that system.
Okay, so it won't drain under the, the neighbors' property?
No, it won't drain into the neighbors'.
Great.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. 1305 Water Street is approved. Thank you again, Ms. Bills. Excellent job of providing information.
As always.
We are moving on to item 9B, consider approval of resolution number R2018-115 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, canceling the December 25th council meeting, establishing a repealing clause, and providing an effective date.
Mayor and Council, um, it is our practice to, um, the Christmas holiday schedule, and the city charter allows for council to, um, have one meeting a month, it does not require two, so this, uh, action just formally notifies the public that we will be canceling the December 25th, 25th council meeting for obvious reasons, that's Christmas.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Nelson, a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any discussion about Christmas? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We will not be meeting on the 4th Tuesday of December 2018. We're now moving on to item 9C, consider approval of resolution number R2018-116 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving task order number 18-01 between the City of Bastrop, Texas and Strand Associates, Inc., pursuant to engineering services agreement dated October 26, 2018, attached as exhibit B in the amount of $45,000 to develop stormwater drainage and flood plain management standards as attached to this resolution as exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute necessary documents, providing for a severability clause, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor and Council, this is the first task order amendment we actually, um, brought to you. So, back in, um, at the end of August, September, we brought to you a series of professional service agreements with the engineers that, um, were selected, and that engineering services agreement is the mothership, if you will. That outlines the expectations of our relationship over, um, the five-year period of time. As projects come and go, um, we will manage those through task orders. There will actually be attachments to the mothership as exhibit B, but they're attachments to this resolution as exhibit A, so it is slightly, uh, complicated. But, this task order, uh, 1801, is going to become, if approved, a, um, exhibit B to that mothership agreement. And essentially, um, Strand and Associates is the company that we spoke to y'all as, as we, um, have had multiple drainage conversations about how impressed we were, um, with one of their engineers that really specialized in drainage. And so, what this task order will do will, um, uh, provide an opportunity for them to participate in our design and code workshops. Um, they will get information and work with our consulting team, but they're also going to, um, participate in multiple workshops, um, with the community, because we recognize, and we've talked about this multiple times, that, um, drainage, uh, manifests itself regulatorily, um, multiple ways in town. For the lots downtown, we have lots of record, and the reason for that is, is it's a historical downtown, and a lot of those structures are a hundred-plus years old. And so, if you don't plot, uh, plat your property, you never encounter the subdivision ordinance. So, they will help us write drainage standards that would be suitable then to, um, adopt into our, um, our, our development codes or our building codes, um, in that instance. They will also work, um, to help develop the appropriate, uh, drainage standards for folks that would encounter the development side, which is traditionally your subdivision ordinance. And then, they will also, um, help with the flood, uh, plain management responsibilities that we have for lots of record in our ETJ. Um, we've talked about several times the importance of Atlas 14 and the data, um, that will come from that. We also recognize, because Austin has made some choices on how they've, um, managed their, their drainage standards, that it will impact how we, um, manage our flood plain standards. And so, essentially, what this document will do tonight, um, is provide us an opportunity to hire Strand and Associates to take the drainage portion of our journey and, um, have , uh, documents, um, processed and ready to go, so that they can be, um, adopted before the end of March, which has been your pledge to this community, so that we can fix the drainage regulation piece of, um, uh, our process before we move to, um, flood plain management, um, and, and a regional detention concept. Um, part of what is not clearly stated here, but, um, will occur, is Strand will work, um, closely with Half and Associates to make sure that the information Half has with their modeling, uh, is factored in, and we are consistent in the application of the, uh, 2D modeling and the 1D modeling that, um, Half has done. We had an opportunity to meet with Half last week relative to the Atlas 14, um, conversation, and we learned some things. Um, as a part of the drainage, um, calculations and, and studies that, um, Half and Associates has done as a result of work with the Texas Development Water Board, they have some elevations that, um, we have not had to this point, that will be profoundly helpful to us as we move forward and manage some of the drainage standards. So, um, we've met with them, and they had some information that they've offered up to us to help us with this journey that, that we will in turn share with Strand. So, all of that to say, everybody we have focused on drainage is working together, and Strand will actually put the words on the page. Um, the thing that I'm most impressed with is, um, we will apply the same concept to our drainage standards that we are with our development standards, and that is, you won't need an attorney to be able to read them and understand what, um, they're requiring. So, there'll be charts based on soil conditions, there'll be clarity, so you can read it and understand exactly what the outcome is. Um, so, I'm very, um, pleased with, um, yet another, uh, professional element that we're bringing to the table to, to solve some very longstanding, important decisions that we will, um, benefit from in the years to come. So, my recommendation is, is that you approve task order, uh, number 1801, uh, in an, an amount not to exceed $45,000. This is being paid for out of the innovations fund. Um, remember, we commented to you that we had set aside some, um, consulting fees because we knew we would have some additional studies, we just didn't know what they were, and in what order, and with whom. So, this is the first that we'll bring to you to be paid for out of that pot of money.
Thank you, city manager. Council, do you have any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Ennis?
Um, thank you, uh, city manager, for, for, um, closing the loop for me with the Half folks, uh, because I was wondering if that wa, that they would be working together and have an agreement. Uh, a question I have, and that's just because I don't wrap my mind around it very easily, is, we approved some money in September for a, um, uh, alternate city engineer contract with these folks. How does that dovetail into what we're doing tonight?
Technically, all of them are alternate city engineers. We've hired them to augment our staff, so they function on our behalf, and that's just a nice title to give them, so. Um, in the case of the agreement that we hired Strand to be an alternative city engineer, um, we have some, a development that is occurring that is, um, in the same general area that we have to marry up the drainage work done by this engineer with that engineer with this engineer. So, in that case, they really are an alternate city engineer, because they're gonna take all of that and make sure that there's no hitch in the giddyup, that it really works. The, the, the example I always have in my head is when the engineers build a bridge from both directions, and they get to the middle and they're off like this. We need to not be off like this, they need to meet up. So, in that case, we did hire them to be an augmentation to staff and focus on that regional drainage, because we have so much development going on in one part of the world, um, and we also have some development that hasn't happened, but interest of the property owners to make that work, so they're a great person to manage all of that, make sure at the end of the day, it's built and it works.
So, bottom line, in, with my personality and the way I process things, their, uh, the first contract was more of a staff-related contract, alternative staff-related contract. The one we're approving tonight is for specific things that we're doing.
Yes, sir, and I asked them to write this specifically because I, I, I know y'all want to be open and transparent, and people, um, are, are very interested in the drainage, emergency drainage ordinance and some of the steps that we're taking, so, this one is, is, is written very specific, where the first one was written more, um, globally, so that when we had that kind of issue, they could deal with it. But, this is to write those standards that we've been saying are antiquated, need to be brought up to date. That, this firm is gonna do that and be able to, to de-engineer it, if you will, and put it in very plain English, very simple, um, kind of like Chris Eckhart, our rate, uh, consultant that came in and just very crisply told you, "This is it," and we all went, "Oh, well, okay, that makes sense." These folks have that same gift, and I think that is so important. As we take the journey, um, collectively as a community, um, there's, um, 100% interest in drainage, and we need to be able to explain it so that people get it and go, "Yeah, that's right, that works."
So, this one is gonna be task order 18-01, there may be 1804 or 2, and however-
That's right.
Down the line.
And, and because we don't always know what we need, in the case of the first task order for the assistant, uh, or the alternate city engineer, the timing of those three coming together at the same time in the same process, we needed that checks and balance. So, sometimes it's development-related, sometimes it's, um, work-plan-oriented, and sometimes we didn't know we had a problem until today, and we gotta fix it, so we call somebody.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yeah, I know you wanted to look at this, and I'm sure you've already called it, but on the compensation side, it probably needs to be cleaned up a little bit better. I realize it's just a draft, but it doesn't make sense to me. The way it reads, it says it will be an hourly rate basis, an estimated not to exceed fee of $45,000.
So, they will bill hourly, but it's capped at $45,000.
I understand, I understand. It's just not real clear in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
And it is draft until it's approved, and then they'll take the draft off of it.
I just wanted to make sure we were clear, that was part of what was already in the budget in that innovation fund, right? So, it's not anything new, is what you were already planning for?
We had a pot of money for consultants that we didn't know what we'd need, and this is a need, and it comes from it.
Right, that's why I just made sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, is the first $25,000 kinda like task order 00, or is it always-
No, it was built into the mothership.
Okay.
And so, the mothership you adopted had exhibit B, future task orders, and this is an, an exhibit B that will be attached to that mothership contract.
So, if, if we, um, because I think there's gonna be lots of coordination required, if they burn through the $25,000, then you would augment, you would come back with an amendment to the mothership?
With task order 1802, and clarity as to what that is.
Okay, so your intention is not to increase, not to go back to the mothership, for lack of a better term, and increase that by, the, the 25 will be 25, and when that is done, it will be done in future task orders. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, because the original $25,000 was for the specific development-related coordination of regional drainage. When that is resolved, that task order ends, which was kinda built in the mothership, 'cause that was the original reason for hiring them.
Yeah, you, you called it a task order, and I'm thinking, but I don't, it didn't have a task order number, so I'm just-
Right, but, but that was the task that got built into the original agreement that caused us to bring it to you. And then, every time we hire them, because the combination of $25,000 and $45,000 is over my limit, every time we hire them for something, I have to bring it to your, for your approval, because the state law requires that we treat them cumulative. So, every time we hire them for something, it has to come back to you, and it becomes an attachment, so that if somebody says, "What has Strand done?" You'd be able to look at the mothership and every task order and go, "Oh, they've done these four projects."
We could've made it 01, and this one could be 02, you know, it's just, it is what it is, but we, we have a definitive scope of work and an agreed compensation for that.
And that's what's important, because the next engineering firm will probably number it a different way, but they'll be consistent in their numbering. The, these are, um, and I don't get hung up on the task order, 'cause it, it's, if I can read it, and that's what we're hiring them for, I'm fine. The mothership guides the expectations, the billing, what happens if we're not satisfied with the work, so we've already defined the rules of engagement.
Like the, the hourly rates? That's why it just references the hourly rates?
That's exactly right. So, this is the task against that original contract that defined the rules, and they're gonna do these tasks, and it won't exceed $45,000. And, and the reason, um, Mayor Protem Nelson, I do that, is I'm never comfortable with an hourly rate. There's gotta be some built-in accountability, so if they promise us something and it costs $60,000, it falls under, it's not my problem.
So, we essentially have a master agreement, we're doing supplementals as needed?
Yes, and, and this case, the supplemental's the task order.
Cool, thank you. I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve- I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis.
I second.
I have a second from Councilmember Rogers, is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, the motion passes unanimously, and the task order 1801 is approved for $45,000, and we know what we're getting, and they're all working together, and we're happy for that. We're now moving on to the executive session. We will be meeting in executive session, city council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to confer with city attorney regarding legal advice related to the status of the 1445 interlocal agreement between the City of Bastrop and Bastrop County for the review of subdivision applications in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. It is 9:21, and we are in executive session. Thank you, Council, it is 10:01, we are back in regular session. We are now moving on to item number 11, take any necessary or appropriate action on matters posted for consideration in the closed executive session. We'll have a brief presentation by the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, what you have in front of you for consideration is draft D of an interlocal agreement between the City of Bastrop and Bastrop County. State law in Texas requires that cities and counties have a contract explaining how plats are going to be reviewed and approved in the city's ETJ. The city had such an agreement with the county, it expired about 11 years ago, and was never renewed or replaced. An effort to replace that agreement with a newer agreement was made in 2016, but was never finally formalized. As part of the building Bastrop movement and the efforts to review and update our drainage information and regulations, we brought this issue forward, we've met with the county and had a few discussions about that last draft from 2016, and we've made a few changes to that draft, and it's before you today. Some key aspects of what this version does versus the draft from 2016 is that this does recognize that the city will be imposing its temporary moratorium and its drainage ordinance, both ordinance 2018-1 and 2018-2, in the ETJ. In particular, it'll be enforced in the areas that the city has always regulated and will continue to regulate, which is Area S for the statutory ETJ, and Area A, which is the city's portion of the expanded ETJ. As for Area B, which is the area of ETJ that's normally been allotted to the county, the county has not agreed to impose the moratorium, or require pre-application meetings, or require an engineer certification letter, and so that language has been removed from this draft. The other part of this agreement is the final provisions, which validate and ratify all the plats have been approved by either the city or the county since the date that the previous contract has expired.
Thank you, Allen. Council, do you have any questions?
As I understand it, the county has given preliminary approval to this?
I discussed this draft with their lawyer yesterday, and my understanding is they agree with everything that's in this document, as long as the moratorium language or the emergency drainage language does not apply to the portion that the county regulates. So I anticipate, based on that conversation, that if you approve this draft, it's likely to receive approval from the county commissioners' court.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the attorney?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the draft D of the 1445 interlocal agreement between the City of Bastrop and Bastrop County.
I second. I have a motion to approve the draft D of the 1445 interlocal agreement from Mayor Protem Nelson, and a second from Councilmember Rogers, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, the motion passes unanimously with a 3-0 vote. It is now 10:04, I'm on item number 12.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. By acclamation, we are adjourned. Thank you.